Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call a meeting to order. It is Tuesday, September 16th, 2025. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes for reports received and filed.
Yes, we have the Collectors' August 2025 fees and the Sheriff's' August 2025 fees.
Okay. Commissioner Committee, ladies and gentlemen, for ten meeting times.
We've got our salary study orientation today. Wednesday, Transportation Meeting, are you going to that then?
Either one of us.
Just go ahead if you can.
Okay.
I will sit on.
Or just one of us, since it's a private.
It's a closed meeting, I asked again.
So Thursday, I've been in presentation at South School for some awards. All Waste Management District meeting postponed to this Thursday. NRA Dinner Thursday night. Saturday is the Wartsville, so there's been Knights of Columbus barbecue at the Knights of Columbus in Wartsville, eleven to five. I think that is it.
Okay, let's see, I got very little here today. You mentioned the Chamber of Transportation, so that's covered, right?
Yes, correct.
Friday is, Cole County is gonna present a program to the Learning and Retirement Group here in Jefferson City. And several elected officials and several directors will be with me at the Learning and Retirement's event on Friday afternoon.
Okay. Well, tonight I have the USS Jefferson City Submarine Committee meeting. Wednesday, Transportation. And then Wednesday night, we have the 250th Committee meeting. And then Friday is the United Day of Caring, and I've got Leadership Form at 7:30. Saturday is the MU South Carolina game. And then Sunday is the Russellville Fall Supper. And Monday, I have the Coed, Coad Executive Board meeting at three o'clock. So that is all I've got. Any Commission comments?
Just a quick comment. I listened to a meeting or two, since we've got the new equipment. And some of us, including myself, are not quite loud enough. Are we, we need to tweak. Do you agree with that, Dawn? Have you listened?
Yes.
Some of us are hard to hear when you play back the YouTube video on our meeting. So just, that means, you know, come to the table, speak up at the, at this area. If anybody wants to check up on us by what we said, it's hard to hear. Do something about it.
Okay. Well, we have the New Business, Accounts Payable.
I'd ask for approval, Accounts Payable pending your review.
I'll make a motion to approve Accounts Payable pending review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval and signing of Professional Services Contract with AP Triton. Good morning.
Good morning. It's a good thing I'm not leaving. Right, I'm time, brother.
Nine oh four.
It's been a busy morning.
I'm down the hill.
If that's where I was coming from, then, then it wouldn't have been bad at all. This is a renewal for another year of Professional Services Contract with AP Triton to prepare our GMT report, our Ground Emergency Medical Transport Reimbursement Report. Basically, this is the program that allows us to get federal dollars to offset the loss that we take on Medicare costs. And these folks have done an excellent job in preparing that report. It's quite complex and looks at all aspects of our financial and operations to compile these numbers. And if you recall, we initially used a company for the first couple of years, and that didn't go so well, and we actually ended up having to pay a lot of money back. Ever since we started using this organization, we've been owed extra money. So they are very conservative in their approach. So it's $7,500 to prepare the report, and then they take 3% of the gross GMT return as well. So just asking that we sign this today so that they can get to work on the 24-25 cost report.
Same cost as before, is that what?
Yep, yep, no change in the terms.
You just told us what the cost was. Okay. I'll make a motion to approve and sign the Professional Services Contract with AP Triton for the 24-25 GMT return.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. I didn't get a sticker on it, should be third to last page, or second to last page for signature. Sorry.
You're late, and no sticker.
I'm fine, sorry.
Okay.
You know you got help us here.
Discussion of 2025-23 General Cleaning and Janitorial Services.
We bid out the cleaning and janitorial services countywide. And we had seven vendors that submitted a response. I put this on the agenda just to see how we wanted to move forward with this bid and their services. We kinda had the bids all over the board from 234,000 all the way up to 734,000 left countywide. And then also, in the meantime, Public Works contractor out there has given notice that he's no longer gonna be able to clean out there. So after talking with Jill, we've talked about that if we move forward or not move forward, or if we don't move forward with this contract, that we need to bid that out separately. Again, because we might get different pricing as to building, cleaning the one building versus the whole county.
Eric, were you shocked about losing your provider?
A little bit. It was coincidental to the fact that the county was bidding the rest of the buildings and considering that. It just kinda happened and... I gotta speak louder, right, Harry? Okay, I'll, I'll try to root for that. So we were a little surprised, but they're a little bit older in age, and they do come from Columbia, and I think it just was getting to the point that they just couldn't do it anymore effectively. So they wanted to step down. So now we have to look for somebody else. I think ideally, the contractor that does the EMS Headquarters building, that would be fitting if they would do ours too. And looked at opportunities to see if we could just piggyback off of that. But in talking with Jessica, who had communicated with Jill about that, would probably just need to bid that out separately. It might not be applicable to a cooperative procurement type of situation, or a piggyback or a change order. So we'll just do that if you decide not to proceed with the overall contract. And we'll probably need to do that pretty soon. They said about a month, but they would stay on until we found somebody to take over.
Well, I think they came up a little more than what I expected. I don't think they're out of line for what I think they proposed. I did not do the walkthrough with y'all to see what the scope of the project was gonna be. But I don't think that this bid, I mean, I think it may be a little high, but I don't think it's necessarily doing the same as what we're doing now. I think we're gonna get more out of this than we would what we're doing with our staff. So...
Well, I don't know. I, I was, those prices kinda, kinda got me. But, you know, we still have to provide the materials and that. We're still gonna have our maintenance people are still gonna be on our payroll. They will just, instead of doing janitorial, they will become just basically maintenance and repairs and things like that. So we're not, it's not like we're saving by, by taking FTEs away to do this. So we're still gonna have those salaries to pay, and then this on top of it. So...
And we do still have to buy the supplies.
We have to buy the supplies.
And I think I gave you guys that amount of, it was about 60,000 in 2024 of what we spent on.
It's gonna probably be closer to 70 this year. Be 70,000 is probably this year.
Jessica, do we have this from you in an email?
Yeah.
What's the date on that email?
Um, August 22nd at 11:01. I printed it.
I was kinda using our Public Works and some of the other cleaning, you know, we were getting done and kinda trying to guess what I thought it would come up at. And like I said, it came up more than what I initially thought. I don't, I don't think we're getting the service, though, that this would provide here as far as janitorial. And, you know, we would keep maintenance people on board, but then we would actually be doing maintenance if we, I mean, we've always got painting or some kind of floor stripping, different things we can be doing. I don't feel like it's all getting done. I don't feel like the janitorial part's getting done. There's a lot of times you can find cockroaches in stairwells or stuff like that. So, and I don't think this would happen with this kind of cleaning. So that's kinda where I was coming out with wanting to push this a lot more. And then the price that we had at Public Works was, I always got the deal out there or how that worked, but somebody knew somebody and said, hey, you know, they, they do it, and they were coming from Columbia even. So I was surprised that we're getting this. So I wasn't ready to, you know, reject them yet, but they were considerably higher than what I anticipated. And if we did do this, and I think we would lose some people in maintenance at some point, either by attrition or we're about to figure it out. But we got a lot of maintenance that needs to be done. We were just talking about Carnegie this morning. It's in kinda rough shape, we're needing to figure out what's going on with, you know, some things over there. At what point do we need to let them know if we're gonna pull the trigger or reject the bids? We got like a month or?
I think it was 60 days in the RFP. I'll have to go back and double check. And so we're approaching about almost a month now.
And you said how many days?
I think 60.
What do we need to do? What do we need to do today? Are you set for some period of time yet, or?
As far as I'm aware right now, we are set until we have somebody to replace them. So if we can bid, it's about a 30-day window. Turn it around, probably 45 days before we can get somebody new on. I think we're okay, but we need to make that decision now on what we're gonna do with our shop, independent of the whole county or together if it's together.
When they did their walkthrough, did they, did they see Public Works and they saw EMS?
Yes.
And, okay. So this price includes all of our, all of our properties?
Yep.
No, not Public Works. You said it does not include them, right?
It does include Public Works and Sheriff and EMS as add-ons that we could do later, since they all have, Sheriff has his own person. These two.
I thought you said we'd have to bid it separate.
But I'm sure it's an add-on, assuming they would get the rest of the buildings.
Yes, once the contract expires. After discussing with Jill, if, if this was rejected, then we would have to do a whole nother RFP just for Public Works, because we could get different pricing if they're just cleaning Public Works and not coming down to do.
If this gets rejected, then we do Public Works separately. I didn't understand that, sorry. You mentioned Juvenile Center on Tennessee. I've never heard of them. Are they around here at all?
I would assume that they would have, like, subcontractors or individuals that they would hire to come and do it.
Do we have references?
We do. I didn't reach out to them. I know, I've reached out to people at Jan and King. After Hours Business, they're the ones that clean EMS. And those were really the only two that I reached out on so far.
Did this include the Juvenile Center?
Yes.
And probably Juvenile, and I'm speaking up for Ford, and I may be wrong, just correct me, but there's probably specific background investigations that have to be done for those individuals before they could come into those facilities.
Yes, that's included in here, okay.
I'm not ready today to hold one. I think there's, there's still a lot of questions. And if we narrow it down to maybe two, then I think we do need to check references. But I'm trying to keep from spending money next year.
Well, we don't necessarily take any action, we just wanna table this for a week or two, and we can chew on it and go from there. Or do you, if you wanna just either awarded or rejected, I guess are the options.
Yep.
I always say let's hold off on awarding or rejecting, and let's do a little bit more thinking and research and...
And then wait on Public Works as well?
I don't know that I wanna wait too long. So if, if we're not gonna do anything with this, we just go ahead and bid ours separately, see what happens with that. If you decide next week or two to go ahead and accept, we can either hold a bid, or we can just do ours separately and you not take the add-on of Public Works.
That sounds prudent.
Yeah.
So the way these came out, though, I mean, are we gonna, why aren't we bidding all these separate, doing separate things? Because they should all be under maintenance. So if we're talking about not spending money, and this is too expensive, but we're gonna do it for certain buildings, I, I'm not, I guess that's kinda where I'm struggling with all of this, too, is if we're gonna do this, this general cleaning and janitorial services is gonna be a different service than what we're actually doing right now, in my opinion. I think it's gonna be a better service than other cleaning and such, that's not necessarily being done on a daily basis. So I guess if you wanna bid on them, that's fine, we can see where they come up with. But what are you gonna do if they come up kinda like these all over the board and maybe more than what we're wanting to spend on? Because we're having troubles keeping people, especially in janitorial positions. Do we even have janitorial anymore? They're all maintenance.
Yep. We converted it all back to maintenance one three or four years ago.
I think Eric's comments are okay, that we're not, we're not going down a road that we can't turn around and come back on. I didn't spend enough time to drill into these numbers, except I, you know, just looking at the... Shocking, if that's the term. So it, it may be that we'll find the clones of what you have now there. That's all they want, is that size operation. I'm willing to do, kinda put it on a one-week hold, this, this kinda thing, and in the meantime, crank this out, what you're, what you suggested.
You agree with that?
Yes.
You agree with the week to choke on it or chew on it?
Okay, then we will add this to next week's agenda.
I'll put that back on there to decide on that. Just for budgetary purposes only, if you're not gonna reduce anything, when currently these buildings are being cleaned, most of them by the current maintenance staff, which is actually ours, you know, so if you're not reducing FTEs and taking on this much of a burden to the county's budget, it's gonna be major. So Jay needs to look into it, too.
That's kinda what I'm looking at.
But we'll put it back on there for next week.
You got more people on your budget this year request?
No, I'm keeping the same. The only thing I had was a, maybe a part-time person from May to August to help with some other mulligan stuff. Just hire a part-time high school kid or something that can do stuff like that. I did not add any extra FTEs at all.
And he's fully staffed right now.
Yes.
Janitorial stuff's so fun.
Do you think Jeff, next year, we get to bid out cleaning supplies?
I have a year to chew on that one.
Okay, then we will keep moving ahead. Approval and signing of MDFB Tax Credit Disbursement Request Number Three from the Soccer Club.
And, you know, this is an in-and-out for the county here. It's 57,000. Jill hasn't approved that for number three. And we'll move that money back to the soccer group when we receive them. Asking for approval.
I'll make a motion to sign and approve payment of the MDFB Tax Credit Disbursement Request Number Three from the Soccer Club.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
When we say the Soccer Club, I want that to say United Capital City Soccer Club.
Yes. I think supposedly they're supposed to have their first tournament next month, but I don't know how they're gonna get that done.
It's been a while since we were out there.
The airshow dinner Friday night, there's still a lot to do. Okay, approval and signing of 2026 LBCP Grant Application.
This is the Local Violent Crime Prevention Grant that we submitted for, that you guys already approved for submission. This is the actual application. We're asking for $25,000 to purchase six Panasonic MDTs. And if you'll notice, I have a sticker where same signs.
Thank you.
No, it's ignoring me.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign the 2026 LBCP Grant Application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Approval and signing of Change Order Number One dash 2025 for Asphalt Overlay Program.
So originally, Public Works was gonna overlay Bryant Road with our asphalt crew. And we decided to change order this into the contractor's work. Overall, this would increase the cost of construction by $100,154.19. After doing some math and stuff, based on our pickup price versus what we're getting it through the contractor to be laid in place, it just made more sense to have the contractors do the work versus our crews, to free them up to do some other work for us.
It's saving us money, because you always save us money.
We're, we're spending the money to get another road in good shape. How about that? So what happens yearly with our asphalt crew? Well, they would call it box, some paved roads, and that's a thinner lift of asphalt. And it, it's a good preventative maintenance, and it can buy quite a bit of life. Sometimes we will come through with a chip seal afterwards, over that a couple of years later. They were gonna do that on this road, but got to looking at the cost and the fact that they had to do the whole road, and it just made a little more sense just to go ahead and do the overlay. It's a thicker overlay. So, and it, it from time, we kinda make these decisions fluid in making some of these decisions, you know? Sometimes you gotta adjust throughout the year as things change and all that. And so normally, we don't do that big of a change order in asphalt overlay program, but this one, it just made more sense to do that. So we're just swapping some money around. It'll cost a little more just because it's thicker, but, and it's a little additional price per ton, but in result, it's, it'll be a better long-term product.
Sheriff, I've got stickers also, and we were both on.
Look at you. You're not on top, it's just EMS, it's, you know, lacking. Some of those have real jobs.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign Change Order Number One dash 2025 Asphalt Overlay Program.
Second. He must still be in Hawaii.
Any discussion? You know, I stretch this out as long as we can, at least go half an hour. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Well, that is all I show on our agenda until 11:00 AM, so... You wanna kill three minutes so we can say we...
Let's see. I would, I would ask if you have the time to go back and listen to this and see if you spoke loud enough. And if you did, congratulations. But I don't think there's gonna be that many congratulations. I think that you're gonna have to tweak, well, let's just wait and see. I, I think we're, we're not getting the word out literally to constituents who might be following online. We'll see.
I do have an announcement. I get used to speaking up. It used to be fine, then you had the microphones and all that, and if you weren't talking in, but, uh, so our security system at our shop and facility is up and running, fully operational. It took a little, it was a little bit of a process. We had to get some new doors installed. They were needing to be installed anyway, but they had to be compatible with the new strike plates and all that. So other county facilities have had this, we just hadn't. So we're getting close to every employee that needs to get into our shop or inside our gate to get fuel or whatever after hours will be set up to do that. If, if we're not there, we're really close. Company did a really good job getting everything set up, and I'm, I've been impressed how seamless the process works as far as, you know, adding and deleting people and giving them credentials to go here, there, everywhere. So it's, it's been, it's been a good process, and it's, it's definitely a big improvement for our security, our facility. And what it's gonna allow is your department and your department to be able to, after hours, get inside the gate. The gate will close behind them, so it's secure. You don't have to worry about, you know, one of your deputies being out and, you know, unprotected or whatever, getting fuel. But then if it's cold out, or they need a little, take a break or whatever, they can go inside the shop, so they'll be able to get in that door, only not the rest of the facility. They don't have to have a key that could use their fob and their key card or whatever to get in. So it's allowed a lot better, it's just more convenient for, for you, for you all, your staff going in. So I'm, I'm very happy that the Commission was, granted us and, you know, gave us... So I'm, I'm very happy that the commission was granted us and, you know, gave us the funds to do this. And I think it's a big benefit to the county as a whole to help us at our facility.
So when's as soon as we can hear back, let's say from two of the users as to what they think about it? When, when would that...
They're already using it. I know you, you, you have access on your card to get into the gate. I can, I think I got an email in to you, we can talk about whether they want to, their need to be into building or not, but...
I thought that was taken care of, but...
There's different, it's a little, you have to select the right credential to give and the right, you know, and it's, it's a little bit about scheduling and it's, it's a little bit of learning curve to learn how to set things up for people to have access to different places, but we're, we're getting there and, but I, you know, I think it's, you know, the gate itself and getting in and out and all that and having their own card instead of the number that is the same number that we've had for seven, eight years, I think is a lot better, so...
Security wise, it was a great idea.
What happens on the delivery side out there? When the fuel is delivered there, what, what's the mechanics there?
So we can give them a couple of different options. If we get a call and let's say I'm at home, I can push one button and it opens the gate for them, they can get in. And then when they come to get out, it's a, it's a magnet that they sense is in the pavement, it opens up and they can get out. Or we can give them a temporary code or we can give them a fob. So like our chip seal contractor, they store their chips up in their yard. So for a week, if we wanna just give them a fob or a punch code, and then we deactivate it when they're done. So it's, there's a lot, it's a lot better than just giving them a key to the gate or leaving the gate open after hours or something like that, so...
Paying somebody overtime to come in and open and close the damn gate, so...
Yeah.
It's a big plus. That gate, the automatic gate and the, the security system in the last, we've done in the last, was it the last five years, probably six years?
The gate's probably seven, eight years or so, but I mean, just overall improvements we've made.
Yeah, that's outstanding.
Like I said, we appreciate the commission's support in getting this done.
We went to, Western District Commissioner Autumn, I went to our, our central...
West.
West Central Commissioners, meeting last Thursday in Harrisonville. And we met at their Public Works. But we talked to old vendors for asphalt from Kansas City. Most of the vendors that were there were, were out of our area. I think I did pick up a catalog. They had one where they have some lifts and stuff we can put in that we could lift ambulances with.
We can do that now.
We probably got the, yeah. Anyway, it was interesting, but Cole County, we, we will be hosting the next meeting in March. So we'll have to come up with something really good.
And just so you know, Eric, several of the ones that we've been to recently, the event was held in their Public Works facility.
Is that right?
And they were spick and span. I mean, they cleaned those places up, so just...
Better go up to bid.
You do know that other than probably this courthouse, our building's the oldest in the county and hasn't really been remodeled over the years. Just an FYI.
You know, being, since it's gonna be in March, I mean, we could be dodging salt trucks and everything else if we had it out there, right? So I suspect it's probably not on the calendar. But, I mean, the event is on the calendar, location to be determined, okay?
If we need to provide accommodations, we'll do our best.
We are, we're in the West Central, which on several occasions have, have taken us almost to the Kansas border for this meeting. It's, it's a, it's a task to get there, but you learn a lot.
I'll, I'll add another thing. Our county engineer's been hard at it trying to get these grant projects wrapped up and bid out. That is a process. And especially when you have ones that have 50 or 60 easements to get, it's very time consuming and the way this played out this, this cycle or whatever, we have four coming due within a few months of each other. So Tanner Bridge is the big one and that's ready to bid here in a couple of weeks.
So is that a clearance from ODOT?
Yeah, we're waiting on clearance from ODOT. We also have a smaller Stirbridge Road and that one's close as well. We have that CDBG out in South Brooks and then we have the sidewalk project. So we'll have a lot happening in the grant arena here. We've decided we're gonna take a little break on grants for a little bit. It is very, very administrative heavy and it can, it can wear you out if you really don't have somebody dedicated to it all the time. So gotta get through that cycle, but we'll be looking for more in upcoming years. But the Tanner Bridge project, that is a big project. It includes some road realignment, cleaning up that whole section through there, so it's gonna turn out real good. Hopefully that'll be the last major project on Tanner Bridge for a while. It's been a period of several projects over the last few years to get some of that area cleaned up, cause that's our, probably our heaviest traveled two-lane road in the county right now, that or Bald Hill.
Can you send me the, the scope of that project? What, does that come all the way from Interstate B to the bridge? 179, I'm sure.
Yes. Actually a little past the bridge too.
Cause that was gonna be in two phases, right?
We, we, there's two separate projects. One's a safety and one's the bridge. They have to be separate because one's grant funded, one's not. It's sales tax funded through our own sales tax, but they, they bid together and they have to be awarded together. But yeah, it's the whole stretch through there.
Okay, that's kinda the way I understood it. I wanna make sure I was telling people right. And that we're gonna go and bid as soon as possible on that. Possibly awarded by this fall, maybe see some stuff happening. How long is that gonna take to do that bridge, you think?
Yup. It'd be a full, a full year. It'd be a full year on, to get that back opened up, so...
Okay. I was just making sure it didn't get more than that now.
We're getting used to roads being narrowed and everything else. It's been going east on 50 now.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
A motion to stand in recess until 11:00 AM?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.